The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
This meeting, the Starble Board of Aldermen will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to be followed by a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed revisions to the agenda that you have before you? Alderman Parker?
Mayor, I'd like to delete item K1 off the agenda.
That's item K1 on page six. All right. Proposed revision from Alderman Parker is to delete item K1 on page six, which is a request for authorization to declare 50 refuse containers as surplus. Is there any objection? Any objection to Alderman Parker's revision? Any objection? An objection seeing none? Note to change to your agenda, item K1 on page six has been removed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove the first item on page three only from the consent agenda, and I'll elaborate on that when we arrive at that point. Item number C, let's just place it on the regular agenda, just a little housekeeping discussion I need to have on that, that's all.
Okay. Item C at the top of page three has been removed from the consent agenda. Please make note of it on your agenda. All right. Further proposed revisions? Are there any further proposed revisions? Any revisions? Seeing none, a motion to approve the agenda as revised is in order. Motion's been made by Alderman Parker to approve the agenda as revised. Alderman Parker, is that your motion? Go here, second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Corey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is the request for the approval of the August 4, 2009 minutes. Discussion.
So moved.
Motion has been made to adopt the minutes from August 4, 2009 by Alderman Dumas. Alderman Dumas, is that your motion?
It is.
Go here, second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Sistrak. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is the request for approval of the October 20, 2009 minutes. Discussion. With approval. Motion's been made by Alderman Corey to approve the October 20, 2009 minutes. Alderman Corey, is that your motion? Go here, second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. Next order of business is comments by the mayor and board. First, I would like to introduce the newest employee to the city workforce. Margot Barnett has joined the Public Services Department, and Margot has actually been working with us since November 9th as manager of Support Services. She is a native of West Point, a graduate of West Point High School, and also attended EMCC. She's previously worked for Babcock and Wilcox for seven years in shipping and production control. Then she moved to Flexible Flyer, where she worked for 12 years, and she worked her way up from an assistant in the shipping and engineering department to office manager and then the sales service coordinator. Since Flexible Flyer closed in West Point, Margot has continued in management positions, with her most recent position being an office manager for an automotive dealership. Margot and her husband Billy have two children, one, a son that is now grown, and a two-and-a-half-year-old daughter. Please join me in welcoming Margot to the city workforce. All right. And next, I'd like to announce that there will be a public hearing next Monday, November 23rd, on the Pat Station Road project. You may have been keeping up with developments on the Pat Station Road project in the past. This is a project that is quickly getting ready to move in the construction phase from the design phase. It's a project that we're very excited about and will be beneficial in North Starkville. Next, I would also, and I'm going to get Alderman Parker to help me, I'd like to announce, first of all, that we are in the midst right now of National Recycling Week, and in celebration of National Recycling Week and in recognition of the city's recycling efforts, there is going to be a ribbon cutting at Starkville Recycling tomorrow at 1:30. We are very proud to be the first community in the state of Mississippi to offer a free curbside recycling program. This event, thanks to the efforts of Alderman Parker and the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee, will be a wonderful opportunity to showcase all of that. And Alderman Parker, I guess, told me this afternoon that I would, I guess, be making a little speech at the event tomorrow, said, "I'm preparing for that." Alderman Parker, did I leave anything out?
Covered very well.
Comments by the board?
Mr. Mayor, let me just say very briefly, it's always good to see citizens out for our board meeting, and we always welcome you here, and I'd like to add, it's so good to see our former Alderman woman, Ms. Mary Lee Bill, who served the city with distinction from 1977 to 1997 for 20 years, and, you know, we must never let that go unnoticed for all the years of dedicated service that she gave, and so with 20 years of service, we need to always just let her know how much we appreciate that, and it's always good to have you here at our board meetings.
Well, thank you very much, boy, and I'm gonna have to call again because you beat my record. I have to do something so I can play better.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further comments?
That's a challenge.
Any further comments by the members of the board? Any further comments? Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll move to citizen comments. Any citizen wishing to make a comment may be recognized for a maximum of three minutes, and please introduce yourself when you come to the podium.
Premier, one, my name is Allen Ward Seven. Our dream to our Alderman bond and the highest mayor, Sistrak. Well, thank you for all your prayers. I got a little walk in the morning, had stayed four days in the hospital, but I'm back up in my. Uh, citizens have a few concerns that they, um, and the question is, we have a fair side reading in the city, and ever since this mess started, we haven't had a test, and when the bad weather comes, we don't hear it. Uh, we don't need a, need on the ground and a side reading. The next concern of the citizens is, uh, at some of these freeway, uh, stops, the four-way stops, uh, we saw that you should put a desk and sign at these stops because some people, uh, not paying attention, drive way too, uh, freeway and four-way stop. And sidewalks, uh, we need to do something about sidewalks, uh, because you better don't want to want to break a leg, break a hip, break a back, that's not good.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Further citizen comments? Are there any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Seeing none, we'll move to public appearances, and we have one public appearance this evening from Allison Matthews from the Partnership to talk about a special event permit for the Christmas parade.
Good evening. On behalf of the Greater Starkville Development Partnership, I would like to just request the special event permit and in-kind services, uh, needed from the city to make the 2009 Starkville Christmas parade possible. We greatly appreciate all the community-wide coordination and involvement, including that, uh, from the city in order to make it possible. We would like to see the city continue to make it right, community-wide, again, handling of it, um, and in growth, and continue the best tradition.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions for Ms. Matthews? Any questions?
What's the date?
December 7th, the grand date is December 7th.
Any further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments? Alderman Parker?
Is it the same route as always? Same route as last year?
Any further questions? Any further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments from Ms. Matthews? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Matthews. All right. Next matter before you is the third public hearing on the revised, or proposed revision of Sidewalk Ordinance 2009 dash two. At this time, I will open the public hearing on the sidewalk ordinance, and Alderman Dumas, would you like to bring us up to speed on what the Sidewalk Committee has put before us tonight?
I can't. I'm gonna ask Jim Gafford to do that, since he's chairman of that committee.
Thank you, Mr. Dumas. Since the last time we met, we, the Sidewalk Committee has again reconvened, and we've made some minor changes to what was in your packet previously, most notably would be section 4.8, of which there was some discussion over the payment lieu option. We have decided, as a committee, to strike that section, so that is, should no longer be in the ordinance. Otherwise, I don't think there have been many wholesale changes. Again, most of this has been exercised to create some clearer definitions. So we added one exception for an agricultural zoning exemption, and then some interior pedestrian connectivity requirements. Otherwise, I don't think there's been any major changes to the original ordinance that was passed in the spring of this year. So with that, if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to do my best to answer.
Questions or comments from the board for Mr. Gafford? Are there any questions or comments for the board? Any questions or comments from the board?
I'd like to, Alderman.
I'd like to commend Jim and the committee for the work that they've done. I think that we're just beginning to see the process and the significance of this ordinance come into fruition, both with the road projects that we've adopted over the past several months, and other projects that this has helped set the proper framework for. I think it's a significant step for the city. I think it's something that we'll talk about later with the Healthy Hometown Award thing that this lends itself directly towards, and so I do appreciate the work they've done and the comments, and willing to go three rounds on this thing with public hearings to make sure that all comments were heard. So I appreciate the work they've done.
Further questions or comments from the board? Any further questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll move into the...
Got one more issue I'd like to bring up that I almost forgot, and it's mostly directed to a question that Alderman Carver had had over assurity bonds, and we discussed this at length in our committee, and we've decided as a committee to not put forward a provision for assurity bonds for several reasons. One is the idea that if a sidewalk is not connected to anything, it assumes that there are no pedestrians, and we feel that that is not true, and that's evidenced fairly well within their community based on the number of cow paths we have. The second issue would be that assurity bonds are typically taken out at current construction rate costs, and so if sidewalks were rebuilt later, then the city would have to make up those costs. And then the third issue would be just the cumbersome management, needing to deal with those assurity bonds, and also tying developers to properties which they no longer own, we felt was probably not a wise decision.
Any further questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll now move into the public comment portion of the public hearing on the sidewalk ordinance. And we will structure this public hearing as we have in the past, where those collectively wishing to speak in favor of the proposed changes to the sidewalk ordinances, ordinance will be afforded 15 minutes, and those wishing to speak against the proposed changes will be collectively afforded 15 minutes, with each person being afforded a maximum of three minutes to speak. And we will begin with a speaker for the sidewalk ordinance. Do we have a speaker in favor of the proposed changes to sidewalk ordinance?
My pretty dear, my name is Allen Ward Seven. We've been working on this ever since March this year, and now it's no good. Our, pretty soon, it's gonna be bad weather, and we don't like to drive with bad weather. But then if we don't have the sidewalk, we can't walk either. So we have had time and time, and we have tried our best to come to grips with what you need. We continue to do, we feel that, so I wanted to try and get our sidewalk over here.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Now, someone wishing to speak against the proposed changes to the sidewalk ordinance. Is there anyone wishing to speak against proposed changes to sidewalk ordinance? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one, we'll move back to speakers for the proposed change to the sidewalk ordinance. Do we have anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed change to the sidewalk ordinance? Yes, sir.
Frank Engels, Ward Three. Highway 12 is a great example of the need for sidewalk ordinance, sidewalk ordinance and for the sidewalks. Just go down and look at the footpath trails right along the curbing, and notice the number of people who walk in the street in the drainage areas on Highway 12, very dangerous. Never should have built that one without sidewalks. Sidewalks are very important.
Thank you, Mr. Engels. Now, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed changes to the sidewalk ordinance? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, we'll move back to speakers wishing to speak for the proposed changes. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed sidewalk ordinance change? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, I will now close the public comment portion of the public hearing, and we'll move back into final board comments. We're wrapping up. Any comments from the board? Comments from the board? Any comments from the board? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Next matter on the agenda is under Mayor's Business, and it's a discussing on the visioning and long-range planning retreat. Essentially, there is nothing new to report here, just a reminder that we have set January 22nd and 23rd as our date. I will be putting together a process where we can meet one-on-one, and I can compile the issues that each of you are facing into a format for discussion at our January visioning retreat. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, next order of business is the consideration of the approval of Mayor's appointment of Chief Administrative Officer Lynn Spruill to the Golden Triangle Solid Waste Regional Planning Authority for the term, beginning on January 1, 2010, and ending on January 31, 2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be recognized.
Alderman Parker?
Mr. Mayor, just a housekeeping matter, I'm gonna, after I make these comments, I'm gonna offer a motion that we approve Ms. Spruill, and I think Ms. Spruill will be a good choice, but the housekeeping matter is, I just want to say this constructive for everyone, that the mayor does not get an appointment to a board or commission within our city. The executive power of the municipality is exercised by the mayor, and the legislative power of the municipality is exercised by, or the Board of Aldermen by a vote within a legally called meeting, and that is set forth in section 21-3-15 of the Mississippi Code of 1972 as amended. I just want the record to be clear, so that will not be presented to us again for the boards to approve a mayor's appointment. We operate under the weak mayor or the code charter form of government. We're not the strong mayor form of government, and all appointments to any board or commission has to be made by the Board of Aldermen. And before I offer this motion, I want to ask our Honorable City Attorney, does he disagree with anything that I just said?
I do not. Your legal reasoning is sound. 21-315 controls the executive power of the mayor in a code charter weak mayor form. It gives the mayor really two main powers, superintending powers over the day-to-day operations of the municipality, and power to break a tie, to the extent a tie develops on the board. It does not confer appointment power.
Well, and I don't want to make an issue of this, because I don't think there is one substantively, but actually, in checking with the city clerk's office, the reason this was put on the agenda as it was is because it was my understanding that this falls within the solid waste statutes, which actually make this a mayor's appointment with board approval, and if I'm wrong on that, I do apologize, but I would like some clarification, because I want to get it right on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to be recognized for a motion. I move that the board appoints Ms. Lynn Spruill, the Chief Administrative Officer, to the Golden Triangle Solid Waste Regional Planning Authority for the term, January 1, 2010, to December 31, 2013.
Motion's been made by Alderman Perkins to appoint Lynn Spruill to the Golden Triangle Solid Waste Regional Planning Authority for the term, beginning on January 1, 2010, and ending on December 31, 2013. Alderman Perkins, is that your motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Corey, Alderman Perkins, you wish to speak on the merits of your motion?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. Next matter for discussion is the consideration of the adoption of the revised sidewalk ordinance to amend ordinance 2009 dash two. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the adoption of a revised sidewalk ordinance to amend ordinance 2009 dash two, and the City of Starkville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 98, Article
Motion has been made by Alderman Dumas to approve the amendment of sidewalk ordinance, or amendment of ordinance 2009 dash two, and the City of Starkville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 98, Article 3, Section 98 through 51 through 98 dash 59. I'm sorry, that was 98 dash 51 through 98 dash 59. Alderman Dumas, is that your motion?
It is.
Go here, second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Corey, Alderman Dumas, you wish to speak on the merits?
I do not.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please answer yea, nay, abstain, as the deputy clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver?
Yea.
Alderman Sistrak?
Yea.
Alderman Parker?
Yea.
Alderman Corey?
Yea.
Alderman Dumas?
Yea.
Alderman Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
By a vote of seven in favor with zero against and zero abstentions, this measure passes. Next order of business is the consideration of the approval of the special event permit for the 2009 Christmas parade and the authorization of the request for in-kind services. Discussion.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Alderman Dumas to approve the special event permit for the 2009 Christmas parade and to authorize the request for in-kind services. Alderman Dumas, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Dumas, you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. Next matter we have before us is from the Building and Planning Department, and that is PZ item RZ, or P&amp;Z item RZ 0906. Mr. Griffiths, would you like to introduce the item?
Mayor?
Alderman Parker?
Based on a letter I have from the Mississippi Ethics Commission, on this matter, I'm gonna have to recuse myself.
Okay. We'll take a moment and let Alderman Parker exit.
Mayor and Board, item RZ 09-06 is a public hearing requested by BNP Developers of Mississippi for a zoning change from R1 single-family to R3A single-family medium density. The subject property is located southeast of the intersection of Eckford and Yellow Jacket Drives and Ward 3. Rezoning will affect approximately 4.98 acres of land. The applicant has stated that he would like to develop the property as a residential subdivision of single-family detached homes, but has not submitted a preliminary plat for review. The medium-density residential land use would allow a maximum gross density of eight dwelling units per acre, or approximately 39 units for the site. For comparison, the current R1 zoning would allow a maximum gross density of four dwelling units per acre, or approximately 19 units for the site. When roadways and other infrastructure are subtracted from the acreage, the estimated number of dwelling units actually constructed on the site would be closer to 31 for R3A and 15 for R1. In April of this year, the applicant requested a zoning change to R3A for the subject property, which the P&amp;Z unanimously approved. The Board of Aldermen denied the request with a four-to-three vote. In August, the applicant requested a zoning change to R3. The P&amp;Z recommended approval of the R3A request in April, and according to the P&amp;Z bylaws, the applicant cannot bring back a similar request for one year if denied by the P&amp;Z, not the Board of Aldermen. So technically, the applicant could have requested an R3A zoning in August. The P&amp;Z denied the R3 zoning request with a five-to-one vote, and the applicant chose not to appeal the denial to the Board of Aldermen. All emails, letters, and petitions, and other materials received since prior to and at the P&amp;Z public hearing have been included in your packets, as you can probably tell from its thickness. It is important to emphasize that changes in an area include more than just zoning changes. The existing conditions of an area are equally important, including, among other things, whether an area is blighted and in decline, or gentrifying and increasing in amenities and aesthetics. Another item to consider is the definition of the area or neighborhood. The state statutes and city ordinances do not define either area or neighborhood, so no quantitative measurement is provided to specify the area of change. Much has been said regarding traffic. Traffic issues are most appropriately addressed at the time of the site plan review and/or subdivision plating, when more detailed information is provided by the applicant for review by the city's Development Review Committee, not during a rezoning hearing. There were a large number of residents from the Pleasant Acres subdivision opposed to the rezoning requests in attendance at the October 13th P&amp;Z public hearing, and the public hearing lasted approximately two hours. public hearing lasted approximately two hours. The city attorney explained to the P&amp;Z commissioners that under the legal concept of res judicata, the request had been decided upon by the Board of Alderman in April of this year and that they could only consider the changes which had occurred since April. The P&amp;Z voted five-to-one to deny the rezoning request based on no changes in the area within the time period since April of 2009. The city attorney recommended re-advertising and re-notification of the rezoning request for the public hearing before the mayor and Board of Alderman this evening. Twelve property owners of record within 160 feet of the subject property were notified directly by mail of the request, and a public hearing notice was published in the October 30th edition of the Starkville Daily News. A placard has also been posted on the site concurrent with the notice. I would point out that planning staff has recommended R3A zoning all three times that the rezoning request has appeared before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Board approval of the R3A zoning would be based on changing conditions in the area, and these changes have been outlined and detailed in the staff report. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I need to ask the board members if any of them have been contacted by anyone regarding the rezoning request. Now, trying to answer any questions the board members may have, and Mr. Brewer is here with his attorney, and the folks from Pleasant Acres are here as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Perkins.
Yes, sir. Mr. Griffith, as I sit here to hear all of the evidence on this appeal, I want to make sure that I understand everything. As to an appeal of this request, I understand that there are only three factors that we can consider. Number one, whether there's a scrivener's error, a change in the character of the area in question, or is there a public need or accommodation? So I want you to tell me, what is your recommendation, and what, if any, of those three factors do you think would fit into it? And let me just hear about your opinion on that.
Alderman Perkins, first of all, I think the statutes, as well as our ordinance, call out two reasons, which is an error or a change in the area. Public need is a strong consideration and change of character, or change in the area, but there are two, unless the city attorney has something different.
I just want to elaborate on those two. Let me hear those.
And what I've called out is change in the area, because there's not been an error in the zoning map, whether it's a scrivener's error or otherwise. So I've called, in the report, I've called several changes in zoning and also improvements in the area, and also cited several policies from the comprehensive plan to support that.
So you're recommending that the board approves the request to rezonate property?
Yes, sir.
As requested by the developer?
Yes, sir, and the information was provided in the staff report.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments from Mr. Griffith? Further questions or comments from Mr. Griffith?
I've got a few.
Alderman Dumas?
What do you see as context, I mean, within your own mind? I mean, what do you see as, what do you think of area? And I know it's purely subjective for everyone, but I mean, what do you, what do you think? What are your boundaries there?
Well, I looked at areas within a general vicinity that were easily reachable, either on foot or by a short car trip. I called several specifics in. I called the school site, also the Middleton Square, the State Shopping Center, the improvements there. I also called the Belgrove and the Annabella Developments to the west, over at South Montgomery Street. I also called some of the zonings that have occurred in the area. And again, you know, it's not really, it's not specifically defined, so I kind of have to look at what I would consider in the area. I know the folks in Pleasant Acres consider what's right, what's right there in their area and their neighborhood and immediately contiguous. I believe that was made very clear at the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing.
Was there a zoning change for Annabella or Belgrove?
Yes, on both.
Those are the two most recent in that area you're talking about?
In that area, and then I also had called the rezoning change down on Academy Road, which occurred this past year. And it was kind of, I called those out because I felt like that was close enough in the area to warrant that, and several folks claimed that it wasn't, yet they warmly welcomed Mr. Gaskin and the Homeowners Association's support of their opposition to the request. So it's almost like it's not, it shouldn't be considered when it's, when I called it out, but we'll include that as support of our opposition. So I, you know, that's kind of a judgment call as to what one would consider what's in the area.
And Belgrove and Annabella were changed from what to what?
Annabella was changed to, I believe it was R1 and changed to R3, and the Belgrove was R3 with the apartments, the Gales Apartments, which was non-conforming, and with the improvements to the Gales, and also the improvements, they rezoned that to R5.
I have no further questions. Further questions or comments? Alderman Sistrunk?
I'd like for Attorney Latimer to speak a little bit more about the res judicata concept and to tie that to the timing of the kind of changes that you're talking about, Mr. Griffith.
I'd be happy to do that, Alderman Sistrunk. Let me kind of start overarching and build our way to that point. This board will be hearing this issue on statutory authority, and the statute is 17-117 as amended, and it states that "Any party aggrieved with the recommendation of an advisory committee such as the Planning and Zoning Committee here in Starkville shall be entitled to a public hearing before the governing body of the municipality," which is what's taking place here. In pursuant to the city ordinance on the issue, this board will affirm, modify, or reverse the recommendation, but the recommendation is just a recommendation. You're to look at all the facts in the staff report and make your own determination based on that objective criteria. The doctrine of res judicata does apply to this, and there are two Mississippi Supreme Court cases that speak to this issue. One is Yates, Y-A-T-E-S, versus City of Jackson, a 1971 opinion, and the other is Westminster Presbyterian Church versus City of Jackson, a 1965 opinion, and both of these continue to be good law to this day. They stand for the proposition that if someone brings a zoning request before the board and that board denies it, if they come back with that same zoning request, the applicable time period is the time period from the first request to the second request. So as applied here, the applicable time period is from April of 2009, when this board first denied this request, to now November 17th. There's another legal issue that the board needs to consider as it deliberates tonight, and that is the voting requirements. The law is that if 20% of the property owners that live within 160 feet of the proposed rezoning, if they contest the issue, which is the case tonight, then a supermajority is required by this board to pass the rezoning, and the statute says that that supermajority is three-fifths. And so tonight, with Mr. Parker recusing himself, the necessary amount of votes is four for the matter to pass.
Further questions or comments from Mr. Griffith? If further questions or comments?
Mr. Griffith, one last thing. Now, in light of what, and I'm just seeking information, I want to hear everything before I make up this decision on this. In response to what the city attorney is saying, is it your testimony that there's been a change in the character of the area in question since April of 2009?
I would say that the only change that has occurred in that period has been the rezoning of the Academy Road property.
So I am correct in understanding there has been a change?
There has been a change. I believe that would be the only one that I could call out at this time.
Right, but that constitute a change in the character?
I, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, now I'm touching on one other legal issue that I failed to mention, and Mr. Griffith referenced it earlier, and that's the standard that this board travels under to make its determination. He's absolutely correct that the first issue is was there a mistake, was there a scrivener's error? Nobody's arguing that here, so that gets put aside. The second determination is a twofold determination. The first part of that determination is whether there's been a change in the circumstances of the neighborhood that would necessitate a rezoning. The second part of that determination, which carries equal weight, the Mississippi Supreme Court has said, is whether there's a public need for the rezoning. And so the board will have to take both of those considerations into play, whether there's a change in the circumstances, whether there's a public need for this proposed rezoning.
Any further questions or comments from the board? Any further questions or comments from the board from Mr. Griffith? Seeing none, thanks, Mr. Griffith. We will now move into the public hearing on the proposed rezoning. And this matter comes to the board on appeal from the proponent of the zoning change. The format of this public hearing will be that the proponent, or the appellant in this situation will be afforded 15 minutes to state their case. In the interest of equal time, anyone wishing to speak against the appeal will be permitted to do so, but the collective time limit will be 15 minutes. Could you please raise your hand if you wish to speak in opposition? Okay. If you could take a couple of moments, if y'all want to decide amongst yourselves how you'd like to allocate your time, we can do it that way. Or if you would rather, I can just recognize each of you for a maximum of three minutes. Everybody's kind of right in this area, if y'all just want to decide. Okay, so what we'll do is I'll first recognize, I assume it's just the appellant that's speaking in favor, and I'll recognize the appellant to speak in favor for a maximum 15 minutes, and then after that, we'll move into the opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And please state your name for the record.
My name is John Moore. I represent BNP Developers, which is Frank Brewer and Les Lindley. This is our appeal, appeal from the Planning and Zoning Commission ruling. And I would ask, to start with, that the complete record that was presented as part of your board packet be considered evidence and as part of our record in the event of appeal. And I've got just a few comments and concerns that I would like to go over with you. It's a somewhat comprehensive package, and I'm not going to go over everything in detail because we, I think 15 minutes is a fair amount of time for each side, but I would like to hit the high points. And then I would like to make some comparisons between our position and the position of the Pleasant Acres subdivision. As Ben clearly pointed out to you, he gave you the complete history of this, and a number of times it's been before the Planning and Zoning Commission and now before the board. The issues that you have to concern yourself with tonight are basically Ben's rezoning analysis, which is included in your package. One, that there has been a change in conditions. As Ben set out, there has been a change, voted on by this board, by the way, to change some property that was zoned commercial on Academy Road to R3A, and that was done since April as well. But not only do you consider that zoning change, but you also have to consider, even though some of these other properties were rezoned prior to April, what has occurred on those properties since then? And the reason you do that is, you could have a piece of property that's rezoned, and it could sit stagnant five or 10 years and have no activity. So it's important to look at Belgrove and the Heartline Project, because since April, the Belgrove property has had two multifamily units being built, which are now completed. And then the Heartline property has had two, and it was an R3 property, two residences completed since April, and a couple of spec, custom houses that are in the process of being built now. So not only do you have a change in the zoning on Academy Road, but you have these changes where these properties that were zoned previously are now undergoing construction, and those are considered changes as well. Also, I'm not going to go over, Ben lists multiple reasons that this project falls within the parameters of an allowable zoning change, and I'm just going to read you the headings. The request is consistent with the policies of Volume 2, Section C, residential land use requirements. It is also compatible with adjacent land uses in the area. I don't know if any of you have gone to the site, but if you haven't on any future ones, I would encourage you to do that, because you can really tell a lot by visiting the property. The interest of this property, if you're looking across Yellow Jacket Road north, you have many, commercial mini storage units, and then apartments behind that. To the west, you have Starkville High School, baseball field, and you also have a football field. If you look back east along Yellow Jacket Drive, you can see some houses that are in unstated repair. Some of the windows are boarded up, they're in not very good condition. As you travel along Yellow Jacket Drive to South Montgomery, then you see the Annabella Project and the Belgrove Project. So you can see over time, all of these areas have increased in density. Our density increase request is from low density to medium density. Those are even higher density areas than what we're asking for. So I think you can see that there has been change in conditions, even though it's just been since April. Is there a public need? Well, I do a significant amount of work for quite a few contractors in town, and they say it's as bad as they've ever seen it, the real estate market, that the houses that are selling now are in the $150,000 to $200,000 range. Any house over there has been on the market for 18 months or longer. The residents that we're talking about, the absorption rate now on those units are under six months, which makes it a seller's market. I've provided multiple data sheets with the information in there that we have provided from you from Realtors to indicate that the price range of the residences that are selling and the absorption rates for those residences. Then, several issues that haven't been mentioned, but were addressed by Ben's report. There are adequate public facilities for this project, sewer, water, electricity. There are no environmental issues that have been brought to our attention or the attention of the city that would make this unacceptable project. The economic effect for the community would be substantial. There is numerous framers, plumbers, electricians that are all looking for work to do. I talked to one contractor the other day, said he's only built one house in 15 months. Any activity that we can do that's reasonable, that's reasonable to the area, that's an improvement to our city, to our tax base, to improve the things that we need to do for our citizens as a whole, we need to be doing. Orderly development. Mr. Brewer, like any contractor, will be required to follow all the ordinances implemented by the city for construction and development, and like we talked about, there is a public need, as you can see in our reports, that these residences are selling, there is a seller's market, and that it will be an improvement to the economy, to the subcontractors. Now, there's a couple of issues that I would like to address, and having completed that, sometimes it's good to just analyze things in a couple of ways. I have four boys, so I could ask a lot of things that they know they can't do, but they ask anyway. So to make it more difficult on them, I said, why don't you make me a list of every reason you can think of why I should let you do this, and make me another list of every reason I shouldn't let you do this, and that eliminates 75% of the questions, because they feel like that's homework, so. But so I made a list of all the reasons that this would be an acceptable project. Then I made a list of all the reasons that it wouldn't be. And all the reasons that made from my list that it wouldn't be were from items that were listed in the letters that were sent in by these residents of Pleasant Acres who are against this project. All right, so to start with, I'm going to give you the reasons that this project is an acceptable project, taken from basically Ben's report and the information I've given to you. One, this, five more minutes? This project is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This project is consistent with the selective policies of Volume 2, Section C, residential land use requirement. This project is suitable and consistent with land use compatibility, the change in conditions that we talked about, the public need. We have adequate public facilities, it doesn't affect the environment, we are going to follow all the ordinances of the city. And I would point out to you, in the proposed minutes from Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, a statement that was made by Mr. meeting, a statement that was made by Mr. Edman, and he said, quote, "Our decision in April, which was a 7-0 decision to approve this, was correct." He firmly believes that. However, they did not vote for it because they didn't obviously think that that one change since April was enough, but that one change since April and all the construction since then in that area is plenty. Also, there's questions about, is this in, excuse me, the same general zoning area? Well, I think it's quite obvious that John Gaskin's letter stating that he doesn't think this is acceptable, which he was a big party in the South Academy Road zoning issue a few months back, soliciting his support and have him rally behind them as an indication that it is in the same area. And I also would point out to you that Mr. Gaskin objected to everything that Kenny Morgan did. He objected to the Academy Road project, and he's objected to this project. Now, to try to summarize this quickly, the reasons against this, all right? The first reason they cited was baseballs being hit into the project. Well, Albert Pujols might hit one into the subdivision. I don't think Ben ever hit one over there, but Jesse may have. But there are lots and lots of foul balls going out on Yellow Jacket Drive. The odds of one, a home run ball going into the subdivision is a lot less than these foul balls, because I've been to lots of games, lots of balls hitting in Yellow Jacket Drive. If that was a real issue, they'd have moved the baseball field. They're also cited in their objections, little or no tax advantage to the city. There is a tax advantage, there's going to be multiple residences, 31 versus 19, traffic patterns, there's not, we don't have a traffic problem in Starkville. I was in Green Bay, Wisconsin, Memphis, New Orleans, and Birmingham in the last month, those people have a traffic problem. There's also a statement in here about, you know, we're going to have students living in row houses. Well, the restricted covenants specifically state no rental of any kind whatsoever, so there's not going to be a student project full of rental houses. I think I've used up all my time. I hope that addresses all the questions that you have. I'd be glad to answer questions if you have any.
We'll take questions at the end. For now, I will move to those wishing to speak in opposition. And the most orderly way to move through this, since we're going to have multiple speakers, is if you could start by introducing yourself for the record, and then tell us how you want us to limit your time.
I think I've worked it out, I'll finish in the next one.
You just want us to keep a running clock?
Yeah. Good evening. First of all, my name's Stan Maynard. I am a resident and homeowner in Pleasant Acres subdivision. Mayor and Board of Alderman, for the fifth time in less than six months, we've had to appear before this body or the Planning and Zoning Commission to maintain the integrity, safety, and sanctity of our neighborhood Pleasant Acres, the second oldest subdivision in Starkville. As with the other appearances before the Board and Commission, you must ask the three questions, deem this change necessary. Once again, we've presented a large number of fellow neighbors, signed petitions against, explaining why none of the questions are answered to meet the qualifications for our change in zoning. And we'd also like all the information that was in your packet as record of this hearing. Those questions are, is there a need for this type of proposed housing in Starkville, and will it contribute to the betterment of Starkville? Clearly, our community has more than adequate supply of these type units in our town. This type unit is available in most areas of the community. We don't need these to back up to our R-1 neighborhood. Mayor Kenny Deal, former mayor of West Point and a good friend of mine, explained to me once that his greatest fear for Starkville was an overabundance of the supply of these units. Eventually, with a large supply, older units are not kept up and become substandard housing, and a community can only support so many substandard housing units. After that, they become a very great detriment to the development of the town. Number two, has the affected neighborhood changed? This answer is a clear no. Pleasant Acres, as mentioned, the second oldest subdivision in Starkville, many homes are still occupied by their original owners, with many more being owned by second and third owners. We have a diverse group of families in our neighborhood. This proposed change would dramatically affect the integrity of our wonderful neighborhood. The land was originally zoned R-1 for good reason, that meaning to maintain the integrity of Pleasant Acres for many years to come. The last question was an error on the zoning map. Here again, the answer is a clear no, there was no error. The original city planners wanted all neighborhoods, including Pleasant Acres, to maintain its integrity throughout the history and be family-friendly. Again, none of the questions you have to meet are met. In addition, the small lot sizes proposed could only accommodate the equivalent of row houses, the 35 to 39 units on five acres that would not only be contrary to the Pleasant Acres covenant, but without question result in devaluing of our property values within the subdivision. Pleasant Acres, at the second oldest subdivision in the city of Starkville, is of historic value. It is important not only to the residents of this subdivision, but to the city of Starkville to maintain the character integrity of all historic residential areas. These small houses would be facing the properties of Starkville High School near the football and other athletic facilities. The city of Starkville throughout the years has visitors that frequent athletic events, and degrading of the property would not create a good impression for Starkville. Excessive traffic is already a problem adjacent to the school on Yellow Jacket Drive, and rezoning this property in this way would greatly exacerbate the problem. For creating these number of units, which would easily house 80 to 100 university students with only one exit next to the school on the congested Yellow Jacket Drive, would not only add excessively to the school traffic, but also impact Pleasant Acres seriously. University students would most likely go east to Jackson Street, many turning through Pleasant Acres on Howard Drive to the university, and then returning in the afternoon when our children are playing. Turning onto Howard would no question become the favored route for students, because exiting onto Montgomery and then turning on Lotsy Way, the turn lane backup already prevalent would be very difficult. This would create a massive problem for Pleasant Acres subdivision, which has very narrow, nearly single-lane roads currently, the most narrow streets in Starkville. Most of you are aware, the traffic through Pleasant Acres to and from South Montgomery has been a perennial problem that was partially but not totally solved by restricting the turn from northbound traffic on South Montgomery onto Howard Drive of Pleasant Acres. Rezoning of the acreage to more than double the allowed housing would exacerbate the problem well beyond the original traffic congestion in a very small subdivision. Now, our city planner has prepared and presented what we feel is a very biased report in favor of the developer. In an effort to say the area has changed, he reaches all the way down Old Highway 25 Lewisville Street to Almost Lynn Lane, all the way to Highway 12 and Old Highway 25 Lewisville Street, all the way over to South Montgomery and Yellow Jacket Drive extended. Let me clarify, the area directly around the property has not changed for many, many years. The Mexican restaurant has been a restaurant since the mid-1970s. The apartments on the corner of Yellow Jacket and Eckford have been there since the mid-'70s. The Athletic Club was built in the early '70s, and as was the printing place. The former Watson Building has been a restaurant since the '60s. I can go all the way out to Highway 12, explaining the little change in the type business in the area, but our report was in your packet. We're very happy that Dr. Cooy and the Starkville School Board also see this change, as the letter in your packet is very detrimental as well, it's unsafe for the children attending Starkville High School. Once again, we feel our case is even stronger than before for the board to deny this zoning. The Planning and Zoning Commission's denied this change. We respectfully request that you maintain the integrity and safety of Pleasant Acres, keep this area safe for hundreds of schools' children attending Starkville High School, and take in the route in front of the proposed development each day. Thank you.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
...letter opposing this rezoning change on the grounds that it would be a detriment to traffic, safety, and congestion around Starkville High School. Regarding point number five of the comprehensive plan, which says stable residential areas should be protected and preserved, this higher-density development would destabilize the area. Neighborhood instability is associated with higher-density kinds of development, such as those being proposed. Point number six, densities of new residential development shall be compatible with surrounding residential areas. This proposed rezoning would substantially increase the density of the residential development and is very incompatible with the existing R-1 residential density. Just really fast here, the key word about area change is necessitate. Do any of these perceived changes necessitate a rezoning? What is the necessity that is being pointed to by these parties? And this attempt to try to tie Pleasant Acres with the efforts of Mr. Gaskin is very weak. He was simply offering his opinion as a friend, not that there is any alliance between...
Mr. Boyd, your time's expired.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd, Mr. Maynard, and Mr. Moore. We'll now move into questions or comments from the board for the presenters or the city attorney, all the matter.
Mr. Mayor, I've got one question. Was this road through there just a couple hours ago, is this property for sale right now, or is that the Josie House?
Mr. Brewer would sell it, but he's got a for-sale sign up, and they're starting to, I guess, clear the, get ready to do something with it.
Further questions, comments? Any further questions or comments for the presentant? Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed, and we'll now move into discussion on the matter of consideration before you, which is P&amp;Z Item RZ-0906. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a legal point?
Yeah.
I wanted to touch on something that Mr. Boyd said about the word necessitate. He's right that some of the cases that construe the statute say necessitate, but others say merely justify. So don't totally lock in on the word necessitate, because in reading the cases, some say justify reclassification, some say support a reclassification, some say necessitate a reclassification.
Discussion. And Chris, I'm going to call on you again. We had some discussions before the meeting as to, given our ordinance and relevant statutes on the subject, what if any action is required by the board on this subject, noting that it is a matter on appeal from a recommended denial from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
We would be traveling, Mayor, under our ordinance on the issue, and it states that this board is to hold a hearing as it's doing now, and should affirm, or modify, or reverse the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Questions or comments from the board? And I guess perhaps a question for you, Chris. Typically, if there's just no discussion on a subject, then we move on as a matter of business and the agenda. My question is, is action required in the form of affirming, reversing, or modifying since this matter is before the board?
The way our ordinance is written, action is required on that.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask, Mr. Griffith, come back down here just a minute, please.
Yes, sir.
Now, all right, the conditions are that we're to consider is a scrivener's error or change in the character of the area in question, taking consideration the public need, and it is your testimony, from what I understand, that there has been a change even from April '09 up to the present.
Yes, sir.
That's your testimony, and I think the attorney for the appeller alluded to that. Now, that's the standard, and, you know, I want to be fair, I want to do what's right, and the law is the law, and the facts are the facts. So I've looked at your report, it's contained in your report that there has been a change in the character of the area in question. You know, I'm not a planner, I mean, that's what we hired you for. I mean, you know, we brought you in to make these recommendations for us, and you studied this, and sometimes in law, you know, when we get opinions and decisions, you know, we may not be satisfied with them, but we do our best. Given all due respect to the facts, the totality and the circumstance of them, and just looking at what's been presented, with my sitting as in appellate capacity here to hear this appeal from the developer via through his attorney, I am persuaded at this time to support the appeal, and the appeal is based upon what you said, and for those reasons, I don't have any other reason to not support your recommendation. So, of course, let me say this while I make this motion, I don't, you know, make motions based on whether there's going to be a second, you know, those of you who've been keeping up with Alderman Perkins, I'm going to do what I think is right. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the request based on your recommendation. So my motion is going to be as follows. I move that the board grant and approve the requests by BNP Developers of Mississippi LLC, P&amp;Z Item RZ-0906, for a zoning change from R-1, single-family, to R-3A, single-family medium-density located southeast of the intersection of Yellow Jacket and Eckford Drives and Ward Three, based upon a finding of the change in the character of the area in question, based upon the documentation and all information that is contained in the staff report that was compiled and submitted and tendered by Ben Griffith, AICP City Planner, dated October 7, 2009. And, Mr. Mayor, that is my motion.
I'm trying to get the last part of it, just a second. All right. Alderman Perkins has made a motion to approve the request by BNP Developers of Mississippi LLC for a zoning change from R-1, single-family, to R-3A, single-family, medium-density, located southeast of the intersection of Yellow Jacket and Eckford Drives in Ward Three, based upon a finding of a change in the character of the area, and the recommendations and documentation contained in the staff report submitted by Mr. Ben Griffith dated November 17, 2009. Alderman Perkins, is that your motion?
It's the date of November 17, October 7th, Mr. Griffith, I'm looking on October 7th. What's the correct date?
On the report?
Yeah, I'll make sure we're clear. I see October 7th. Let's just make sure it's clear.
October 7th.
October 7th, 2009.
So, all right.
But with that change, that is my motion, Mr. Mayor.
So change the date to October 7, 2009, and the rest remains the same?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Seeing none, motion fails for life of seconds. Move back into discussion.
I move that we affirm the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision in P&amp;Z Item
Alderman Sistrunk has made a motion to affirm the Planning and Zoning Commission's request in a matter of P&amp;Z Item RZ-09-06. Alderman Sistrunk, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Dumas. Alderman Sistrunk, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, thank you. No, thank you.
Discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman.
One question to the movement, to the other one from two, are you saying with that motion that there's been no change in the character of the neighborhood and no public need? Is that why you're offering the motion?
I'm offering that motion because since April of '09, I don't think there's been sufficient change in the neighborhood.
So you said it has not been sufficient, but you agree there's been some change?
I absolutely, had the previous board not voted the way that they did, I very likely would support a rezoning, but we are bound by the vote of the previous board.
Now, we're not bound by it, of course, I think the city attorney just said that there's been some change in the...
Since April of '09, I don't think there's been sufficient change since April of '09.
Mr. Griffith, I think you've said numerous times, there has been change, I keep asking you the same question, but there's been change, I think you just said that.
Yes, sir, since April, there was the rezoning, and then I guess what Mr. Moore had pointed out, the other changes as well.
Okay. Just want to make sure we understand.
Housekeeping note, y'all do, please try to limit the conversation back and forth. If you have a question, just pass it through, and I know that seems formal, but it helps us maintain the course.
Now, when you say pass it through, Mr. Mayor, but point of clarification, what do you mean, pass it through?
If you have a question, you can just state your question, and I'll recognize Alderman Sistrunk. And what that does is it keeps...
Go ahead.
Keeps the meeting from degenerating into an informal conversation.
Right. Let me say, Mr. Mayor, for this discussion and future references, you know, I mean, as a sitting member, I don't see anything that's contrary to the rules of us to have discussion, understand, it is important governmental matters, and so, you know, I think we need to answer these questions, as long as we have a need to, an opportunity should be given to, so I don't see anything unprofessional or inappropriate about it. If I'm wrong, I want you to point out to me in the rule book.
Sure, it's the way I've chosen to chair the meeting, and at any time, if you disagree with the way I've chaired the meeting, you can make a motion to appeal the decision to the chair, and with the majority of the board's vote, that decision is reversed.
Mr. Mayor, one last point of recognition I yield, and just all due respect, I mean, I'm just being constructive here, so the public and the citizens and everybody here can understand, this is not the mayor's meeting, no, this is the meeting of the mayor and board of all, and we need to operate the governing meeting according to our rules of procedure, not the mayor, but it's not Perkins' meeting, it's the mayor and board. Whoever is discussing, with Alderman Vaughn, anybody, just want to be clear on that. So if Alderman Vaughn or Alderman Dumas says, I want them to have the same respect, because as his term get older, it's going to be somebody else in this making these comments or want to have something to say about this. So let's just make sure that we all afford everybody a comfortable forum and a comfortable voice as we represent our constituents and the citizens of the city of St. Louis. And I have nothing further.
Sure.
I'm done.
And the decision to appeal the decision of the chair absolutely comes verbatim from the rules that have adopted, have been adopted by this body, the majority always rules. This is not a dictatorship.
I'm ready to move on, I hear you.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please answer yea, nay, or abstain, as the deputy clerk calls your name on Alderman Sistrunk's motion.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
Alderman Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Dumas?
Yea.
Alderman Corey?
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk?
Yea.
Alderman Carver?
Yea.
By vote of five in favor with one against and one recusal, this motion passes. Next matter on the agenda is consideration of P&amp;Z, P&amp;Z item CU 09-03. And we'll give everybody just a moment to clear the room and also get Mr. Parker.
We should have told you that a while ago.
Yeah, it was all consent, I'm sorry.
Hey, we thought you just wanted to watch. But now, this side is the more interesting side.
Do me one favor, though. I haven't been getting emails about monthly heritage museum meetings, so I asked to be reappointed as a resident, so I want to be able to come, at least...
I want him good to just start shooting you an email that's with the horse.
Okay, my email's the same, so I'm happy. I know, I just get it every time I drop by.
Yeah, thank you.
Long time ago, yes, man, nine years, one hundred and nine.
Me too, I remember like...
Thank you.
I never seen you in middle school, like, you were like...
One of the keys to success is just show up and pay attention, so I'm trying to do that.
Thank you. And we are still in order. You guys take a seat. All right, next matter on the agenda is the consideration of P&amp;Z item CU 09-03. Mr. Griffith?
Mayor and Board, the next item is a request by Ms. Michelle Hahn to allow a church or place of worship in an R1 single-family zoning district. Subject property located at 1315 Louisville Street and Ward 3. The rezoning will affect a property, I'm sorry, is that a rezoning, this is, will affect approximately 0.79 acres of land. The applicant recently purchased property and wishes to utilize it for worship services and other religious affiliated uses. The subject property consists of an existing single-family residential structure with a storage building and a gazebo overlooking Hollis Creek. The city's Development Review Committee conducted a site plan review on October 28, providing few comments and no objections. Three property owners of record within 160 feet of the subject property were notified directly by mail of the request. A public hearing notice was published in the October 23 edition of the St. Louis Daily News, and a placard was posted on the site concurrent with the notice. No public comments received at the public hearing other than from the applicant. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the request, revising two of the four staff conditions, with one commissioner recusing himself from the vote due to a business relationship with the applicant. And those revisions were noted by strikings and underlines in the staff report.
Discussion from the board? Any discussion from the board?
What is the car, the vehicles part?
I'm sorry?
The conditional about 12 or more vehicles, is that just kind of what's the capacity they have?
Well, we looked at, they have a large driveway, they also have a double garage and a double carport, and we looked at the parking that was available, and the discussion by the Planning and Zoning Commission was that if the membership grew and they would, and if that site could not accommodate with the existing, you know, pavement area, that they would park in the adjacent multifamily complex, and Planning and Zoning Commission members felt that a way to use that, or, you know, to come up with a number to try to contain the amount of parking on their site, and that's what, that was the revision that was added, or the addition to the text.
Discussion from the board?
Mainly to provide a guide for staff when we go and look at that in the future, so we have an idea of exactly...
Are they going to report?
No, they're not going to report, we have to, we staff had to go out, and I'll calendar it, and I've done this before, and we'll go out and we'll look at the site and do an evaluation and figure if we need to revisit it, or if they've not grown to the point of that.
So in that two-year timeframe, if growth would occur, say, to 20 cars, it'd be yearful, fully?
It would, a lot of times that's complaint-driven, so we hear about it before the two-year, the two-year calendar clicked up.
Do you feel like this is sufficient as far as the...
We thought so, we thought so. And also to maintain the residential character, you wouldn't want to, unless you had to, go in and dig up a portion of the yard to create a parking lot, and they've got a driveway, large driveway, and some other parking as well, try to, again, with the residential character, try to keep it low-profile and, you know, not look like a commercial development in the residential area.
Will there be any assignments associated with this house of worship?
I don't believe so, we've talked with the applicants, and again, they wanted to maintain the low-profile, and it's kind of tucked away off of Louisville Street, you just about have to know where you're going to look for it, you're just not going to happen upon it driving down Louisville Street.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor? Alderman Vaughn?
I move consideration of P&amp;Z item CU 09-3, a request by Ms. Michelle Hahn to allow a church place of worship in R1 single-family zoning district located at 1315 Louisville Street and Ward 3.
Alderman Vaughn has made a motion to approve the request by Michelle Hahn to allow a church place of worship in an R1 single-family zoning district located at 1315 Louisville Street in Ward 3. Alderman Vaughn is at your motion?
That's my motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Dumas. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Alderman Carter?
Well, the motion by Alderman Vaughn carry the four conditions recommended by the Mr. Griffith. Normally, we've done motions like that, we've said, you know, contingent upon approval with the four, whatever the conditions include, but does he need to state in his motion the four conditions are also part of the motion?
Yeah, I guess there's two ways to look at it, it is in the packet, so that could be considered part of it, but if you want to be clear, then you could amend the motion. Discussion. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please answer yea, nay, or abstain, as the deputy clerk calls your name.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Perkins.
One clarification, and this is what the understanding at, from what I'm gathering here, that this is what the, what conditions contain in the staff report, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, just make sure we're clear.
Please answer yea, nay, or abstain, as the deputy clerk calls your name.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
Alderman Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Dumas?
Yea.
Alderman Corey?
Yea.
Alderman Parker?
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk?
Yea.
Alderman Carver?
Yea.
By vote of seven in favor with zero extensions and zero against, this measure passes.
Thank you, Mayor and Board.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Next matter for consideration is from the Engineering and Streets Department, a request for authorization to advertise for bids for the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act project. Mr. Kemp?
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Mayor and Board. Also known as the stimulus projects, this was approved by the last board, the roadway list, we went full steam ahead with the plans and documents. Those have been approved by MDOT, I have a couple of sheets in the back of your packet, MDOT has approved them, they're in Jackson, waiting on us to advertise. This is going to be about a million-dollar project, about four miles worth of overlays throughout the city, and I believe at the last meeting, there was some question about how these roadways were selected to be a part of the stimulus project, and essentially, if you look on the second page of your packet, that's the City of St. Louis Functional Classification Map, these are all the roads that the federal government recognizes, and in turn, all federally-funded projects have to be spent on some of these roadways, so that pretty much narrows down the number of roads that we can use. But like I said, we use this and also our prioritized list and got the formal board's approval. Now we're coming before this board for authorization to advertise, per MDOT's requirement, we need to advertise and take bids by, I believe, December the 15th, in order that we can get, stay on schedule and meet their deadlines. Are there any questions?
Discussion. Motion is been made by Alderman Dumas to approve the request for authorization to advertise for bids for the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act project. Alderman Dumas, is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Do I hear a second?
Excellent.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I do not.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Major Quill is passing. All right, and that brings us to a close determination of whether there is a need to go into executive session. Give everybody a moment to clear the room so that the board can determine whether there is a need to move into executive session.